Kia ora tata, welcome everyone to this meeting of the Dunedin City Council, Tuesday the 24th of March. We have an apology from councillor Benson-Pope and I move from the chair that that apology be accepted, second to councillor Staines, all those in favour please say aye. Against, carried. I'll further move from the chair that the agenda as published be confirmed. Second councillor Staines, any discussion on that? Can't be much because there's only one item. I'll put it, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Item three is for noting, declaration of interest which members are reminded of. And on to item four. And it's the adoption of the draft long-term plan 2015/16 to 2024/25 and these supporting documents and the consultation document. I wonder if Mr Pickford would like to come up. Welcome Jane, welcome Simon.
Okay, as we're all aware this was delayed from a previous meeting where we needed to do some amendments. So I'm going to throw it open. Would you want to open the thing for Simon?
Can you hear me? Yep, I'm on. Through the chair, what councillors have and would have received at the end of last week is the updated consultation document and the updated infrastructure strategy. The main change to the consultation document was the change to the story on managing our infrastructure on page 16 to 21, that was substantially rewritten. And the other changes that we made really were primarily editorial, but there were some bits and pieces that we changed in order to make it really more clearer explanation and telling a story for our community around the issues that we wanted to consult upon.
So, any questions councillors? Councillor Noon?
That's a financial question, so I'm not sure whether it's Jane or Simon or perhaps. But on page 4.5, under budget updates, it talks about the impact with depreciation expense associated with three waters. And then it goes on to mention about property, plant and equipment. I'm just wondering, the question was, did the property, plant, equipment reassessment have the same impact, i.e. reducing the surplus as the three waters depreciation?
Mr Mackenzie?
No, it didn't.
Councillor Thompson?
Look firstly, I apologise for dropping my nameplate on the floor. And also for the fact that I should have communicated this earlier, but I don't think it's a significant change. I'm just a little bit worried on page 34 of the revised paper, it was 32 on the original. It lists the options to be considered with regard to funding a new aquatic facility in Mozgill. And one of them relates to the Waipori Fund and it follows a suggestion that I made. And I'm concerned that the wording that is here will be fundamentally misunderstood by the public and certainly won't represent what I was suggesting. Because it says using funding from the Waipori Fund, which I think most people reading will take to mean taking money out of Waipori and using it to spend on a swimming pool, which was certainly not my suggestion. And I think, I just wonder if it's still possible to be rephrased, at least so it's phrased similarly to the other options. So it might say as, for example, an investment by the Waipori Fund, which is similar to the next one, investment from a council-owned company. I just think in terms of understanding and a particularly issue that's likely to be forward, if that were possible still to be changed, I would be grateful.
Yeah, through the chair, that would be, we could do that, that'd be quite easy to do.
Can I just confirm with Mr Mackenzie, since this is a funding issue, that the wording, that wording would be...
That wording's fine. I guess the issue that we do have is that the changes we have to make are minimal. This document has been audited. And, but for clarification, I think that wouldn't be fine.
And since I have the opportunity and Mr Lowden is here, can I ask you, Mr Lowden, if that would be a material change?
No, that's not a material change and it strikes me as being a helpful one, so there's no issue.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Thompson. Further questions, councillor McTash?
Well, just to understand further, so that we can confine the discussion around today's document, changes that are material are clearly not able to be made at this point, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So any substantive changes would have to wait until after we have had discussion on the submissions?
Yes, that's correct.
Councillor Wally?
Just referring to page 35 of the revised document about the cricket. It was my understanding that Otago Cricket Association had received a letter from New Zealand Cricket securing them test matches for the next eight years. But yet it says more likely to allocate games. So just...
I can confirm that Otago Cricket have received a letter from New Zealand Cricket confirming that they will receive confirmed fixtures. I don't know what they are off the top of my head though, so...
But I take it councillor Wally, that what you're suggesting is that the wording reflect our updated knowledge? Is that what...
Correct, and that if the lights were installed, that we are, we have been allocated games by New Zealand Cricket for the next eight years. Because there was three tests from Australia, two tests from India and two tests from South Africa.
Yes, I think following that letter, we could say New Zealand Cricket has committed to allocate games that are more, allocate games to grounds, you know, as good games to grounds with suitable lighting or with their effects. So that's true, they have committed that, we have that in writing.
So that would have the effect of enhancing the understanding of the reader of the consultation document. Further questions, councillor Wilson?
Sorry to raise this again, I tried to catch up with you Jane on Friday and I couldn't. But I had set out, there was a motion, I understand, in January from the council on page, relating to the strategic cycle net with page 24. And I'm just wondering, while we set out the planned projects in order of priority, my understanding, and I think it was councillor Thompson who moved it, but his name came at Keston there, so I can't remember it, was that council was interested in receiving feedback on these priorities, have we got it right or something along that line? And we actually haven't asked that either on page 24 or subsequently on the latter pages, which we could have actually asked that question. It was a motion that was put out January meeting.
My understanding was that that was around moving the bridge forward in the order of priority and that's why we've asked a question, whether it's appropriate to move the bridge forward.
Further questions? Councillor Thompson?
Again, it's relatively minor, but I just wondered, in the proposed rates table on page 37, we give a span of capital values for residential, but it does strike me that we stop it at a figure that is quite low. And we give lots of figures in the median to lower part, but we don't give anything in the higher than that. And I wonder again whether it would be possible to maybe put another line in there that just perhaps puts something in it, I don't know, somewhere around the 400,000 mark or something like that, because...
This is in the residential?
This is in the residential, yes.
Mr Mackenzie, is that a possibility?
We can definitely add that, and the problem we're finding is we've run out of space on the page, but...
We could take out one of the others.
You could remove a cloud from the top of the photo. We'd quite like a cloud. Councillor Cowan?
On page 29, I think Becoming a Giga Town, we've said that the 250,000 that would be proposed, which is part of the 65, already there, and 185 additional for Giga Town projects would be administered through the council's enterprise Dunedin. That isn't actually the proposal. The proposal is that that money would be, would go to the trust and not be administered through Enterprise Dunedin.
Can we just confirm, Mr Mackenzie, that how does that money flow through?
So the proposal was, is that Enterprise Dunedin's budget gets increased by $185,000, then they would then pass it on to the trust or if other alternatives were found to other potential suppliers of the services?
So the contracting for the money, what it will be spent on and the monitoring of delivery would be done through Enterprise Dunedin?
So the plan isn't now that it goes to the trust, it goes to Enterprise Dunedin to decide where best to achieve whatever?
It gets added to the Enterprise Dunedin, I mean, it may end up going to the trust. Certainly at the moment, the point of setting up the trust is in part to do some of this work or most of this work, but the Enterprise Dunedin will be responsible for, they will hold the budget, they will give out the budget, they'll do the contracting and the monitoring of the delivery on that contract.
What's confusing is that if you add another portion to something that's already there and the something that's already there has been committed to the trust, then adding another portion to that money looks like it's adding that to that trust. It's been already committed under a service level agreement, that 65. So you can't add to that without adding into the same thing, it seems to me, to make it into 250. Once you've made 65 into 250, then that 65 would be in the same place as the rest of the 250?
There's some discussion underway about whether the 65 would then be subject to the same contract and service level agreement, but that's not determined. So the 65 is currently tagged for activities around the digital office, some of which is fully been related to Giga Town, quite a lot of which has not. So in this sense, it's for delivery on Dunedin's digital strategy, but it will be administered through the economic development team.
Councillor Staines?
Just to clarify, the 65,000 that is currently in this financial year going to the trust for the office is a one-year, so it expires at the end of this financial year.
Okay. Further questions? If there are none, would someone like to move the recommendations on page 4.2? Councillor Noon? Second councillor Staines, would you like to speak to it councillor Noon?
Acknowledge the huge contribution staff have made to get to this point.
Further discussion? Councillor Benson?
Councillors who've been around the table for quite a long time may remember my long struggle for several years to get a decent, clear, highlighted debt graph included in this kind of annual plan, long-term plan document. There was significant resistance to this, especially from Ethel Stevens at the time. But in the end, by 2012, after a number of years, this kind of very clear graph covering a whole page showing not only the intended reductions in debt, but the actual previous 10 years of debt accumulation was provided to give very, very clear indications to people, a snapshot if you like, of what most people that I talk with are mostly concerned about, and that is the DCC debt. If we look at what is proposed for today, we have what claims to be a snapshot here, just on our tables. There are essentially 11 pages here of various statements of various kinds. None of them is a graph of the debt. If we look at the first iteration prior to the extraordinary meeting, for the debt graph you need to go to your original document on page 10, that's the Building a Great Small City Long-Term Plan Consultation Document. If you look at page 10 of that, you see a very pretty and soothing picture at the top of it of someone walking through trees. And then underneath that, you see an exceedingly small graph with a highly compressed x-axis showing debt only from 2005 on. I don't believe this actually tells a contextual story and I don't believe it sufficiently highlights things. And I'm pleased that the newer version that we now have actually goes back the previous 10 years and shows really with some kind of context what kind of debt situation we're in now. This is on the new version of page 10. However, if you look at the surrounding text and you look at all the other diverting issues in the document, even the new version doesn't come near highlighting the debt issue that we used to have and that I fought for years to get. This new debt graph has a compressed x-axis. Compressing the x-axis on something, as I was quoted by ex-CEO, Mr Orders, compressing the x-axis of a graph has the effect of making a Himalayan graph of debt look a bit more like the Dorset Downs. Putting it as a fairly small item surrounded by a lot of other stuff, again, takes away from highlighting what is really the fundamental problem which we should be focused on. I believe that despite the fact that we now have the information in this latest version, even though it doesn't appear at all in this flyer, that what we should have and what we should always have is the full page that we had in the past showing exactly what the debt is for the last 10 years and for the proposed next 10 years. Further than that, I would like in future to see a reference made to previous attempts to show what the debt is going to be in the future. Because what it shows in fact is that you basically have an umbrella curve, rising actual debt, falling hopeful debt, and that this umbrella keeps moving with time. And if you compare this graph from 2012/13 to the current one proposed, you'll see that indeed the umbrella has moved along. And the claimed peak of debt that was claimed in 2012, 2013 and 2014 has in fact never peaked, it's continued to rise. So much as all is, I approve of some of the changes that have been made. I'm still concerned that this document in total represents more of a public relations exercise rather than a clear factual, let's look at where we really are going. And it's the public relations aspect of it, especially this, that makes me not want to vote for recommendations one and three. Thank you for carrying me out.
Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to preface my comments this afternoon by offering credit to Dr Vidros and her predecessor Paul Orders for their work in dragging this organisation into the 21st century and making it more efficient in the process. I don't see myself as one of councillor Thompson's doomsday clock watchers, but at the other end of this spectrum, I can't share the breezy optimism that this document is presenting to our community. A document that asks us to find eight to 10 million dollars in savings year on year for the final five years of this 10-year plan. And we're told that we can do that by not adjusting budgets for inflation and being more efficient. And I think regardless of the fine work that has been done in recent years, we've reached the point where those quote-unquote operational efficiencies are becoming harder and harder to achieve without cutting into what it is that we're offering. Which is why fundamentally, I think this is a long-term plan in denial. It's painting a, we've got a $68 million hole to fill and we're told that we can do that without raising rates or without doing less. And I think that that is dreaming, to put it mildly. And that the conversation about whether our community want to pay more or whether they want us to do less is something that we need to be upfront about. And it's something that I was hoping that this long-term process would be brave enough to ask our community to have that conversation. You know, we're pretending essentially that we are continuing to maintain our levels of service and worse than that, we're saying that over the next 10 years, we can continue to do the same. And rather than offering the rate payer the option as to be a part of that conversation, we're essentially doing it by stealth. And I offer by example, in this year's draft budget, we were presented with reduced spending in our collections of our city library and a reduction in opening hours of our city library. Now, you can't tell me that that isn't a reduction in service, but rather than being upfront about that in this UNESCO City of Literature of all places, it gets buried in supporting documents and is a budgeted line item for someone who's forensically studying this work to find. And I think that is a little disingenuous. This is just one example and I can't imagine that we will get very far through in the next 10 years without being confronted with many of these. It's problematic and certainly these opinions were expressed as this consultation document was being put together and I am disappointed, I think, that more of that perspective wasn't included in this, in this final document. We're in a position where we can't vote this down. We have a statutory obligation to have a long-term document to go up for consultation on and nor can we at this meeting, as we've heard, change it fundamentally. But I do think we have, we owe it to our community to invite them publicly at this meeting to comment. The document doesn't ask them to, but I'm certainly keen to hear from them whether they do want to pay more in rates or for us to give them less for them. And if so, what the reduction of services would look like for them over the next 10 years. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to encourage them to take that up regardless of the lack of that being specifically addressed in this document. Thanks.
Councillor Mackenzie?
Thank you, Worship. I would like to thank staff or start by thanking staff and You, Your Worship, because I think you're also involved, for the improvements that have been made to this text since we first saw it. I think certainly the front end of the document has significantly improved in its clarity and its conciseness, is that a word? Thank you. However, and also for the efforts that SAA have gone to to navigate the needs of audit as well as the needs of, or the requests and feedback that came in from city councillors. However, there are elements or aspects to this document which do still leave me with significant cause for concern. And I don't think I would feel okay about signing off on this today without highlighting those. So, given that, I endorse councillor Hawkins' comments around the FACH that one of my fundamental concerns with this document is that we are not acknowledging the significant challenge that is in front of us in terms of probably a trade-off between aspirate community aspirations and maintaining service levels and this 3% rates target. I acknowledge and thank the mayor for highlighting in his introduction that 3% is the average increase in government, local government costs index costs across the board over the last 20 years. If we are setting a target or a limit, a limit of 3% on our rates year on year for the next 10 years, we're not, that's not going to be an exceptional circumstance that we go over 3% for, that will be anything over and above existing service levels. Unless the local government cost index is for some reason substantially below its historic average. I don't think that that is highlighted enough in this document. I don't think that is made clear other than in the mayor's introduction. And again, I thank the mayor for that. And I think it's something that we need to be very cognizant of as we go out and consult our rate payers on this proposed rates increase limit of 3%. Further, I'm concerned that the six, and I thank staff for including the fact that we are, we do have $68 million to remove from our budget over the next 10 years if we are to meet that target. And I think that it is very ambitious to suggest that we might be able to do that with finding efficiencies and whilst maintaining existing service levels. I think that this would have been an excellent opportunity to engage with our community about what it is that they are not, they don't consider absolutely necessary for us to be doing or whether if they do not wish us to cut service levels, whether or not they are happy with a rates increase that is greater than 3%. And I don't think this document does that and that really disappoints me. I also have some concern about the FACH that this document, it does now highlight and I thank staff for including the fact that we are end-loading the repayment of the additional $30 million that has come onto our books from the stadium debt. But I am disappointed that that is not acknowledged in the financial strategy section of our document. It is instead, the detail of that is put into the section about the stadium, when actually I don't think it was a stadium-related decision. It was a decision that was made in relation to how do we smooth our rates increases over the next 10 years and how do we keep those rates increases down while still achieving the $230 million debt target? So I think it is a fundamental part of what this council, regardless of what individuals around the council table thought of that, it is a fundamental part of this council's financial strategy over the next 10 years. And I don't understand why it is not contained within that part of the document. I think finally, I do have some concerns about the lack of some of the, lack of consistency in some of the documentation around the financial strategy and what we actually decided to do around this table. Now, I think the order in which we debated and discussed things at the January meetings around this document has something to do with that. And I acknowledge that for staff, it has been a very difficult job to take the end result that we came to and align that well with the initial text that was in our documents when it first came to us. I don't think that would have been an easy task and it's not a criticism, but it is a concern of mine that some of the statements in the financial strategy about reduction on debt are not actually where we necessarily ended up. And I think that that lack of alignment continues to be a concern of mine. So again, thank you to the staff for the efforts that they have put in, but I don't think I would have felt okay signing off this document without highlighting those concerns and welcoming comment, as councillor Hawkins has welcomed and commented from our community about whether or not they do wish to see service levels maintained over the next 10 years. And if they do, whether or not they would accept a 4% rates increase instead of a 3% rates increase in order to make that achievable. Thank you.
Does Lycan?
I too would like to thank the staff and I think that considering what we gave them to do, it was a Herculean task and they've had to make some guesses and I think their guesses were good as well. So thank you guys. Three issues are raised for me in this document. The first, well perhaps not the first, but with debt, we can continue to play a game of walnut shells. Where we've got the three walnut shells and we have to guess which walnut it's under. If it's under the walnut that's called DCC, we call it one lot of debt. And if it's under a walnut that's called DCHL, it's under a different set. They're all our walnuts, this whole bag full of walnuts is our walnuts and it doesn't matter which walnut shell they're under. So I don't think it's very helpful to divide council debt off from DCHL debt as if there's somehow, because we shuffle them... somehow, because we shuffle them from one to another, we've done a good thing or a bad thing. The second issue is one that I think councillor Vandevos touched on, but I see it slightly differently when he described the umbrella. I think what there's a tendency to do is want to spend more now, saying in principle we want to keep the rates increases down, but as it happens right now, we're not feeling like doing it. And the effect is that we're just doing a version of Not On My Watch. All the savings get done by the people in the future that aren't us, and all the spending gets done by the current people on the whole. So we're assuming there might be savings further out, and then when further out comes closer, turns out not to be. So I think that's unhelpful of us to assume savings somehow in the future if we're not prepared to assume them this year, next year, and the year after. And the third area, and I think councillor Hawkins and councillor McTavish have touched on this too, or maybe majorly, is that we may have dropped an opportunity in this document to encourage people to engage with the what do they want cut or included compared with the rates increase, because they are at the moment encouraged to make a comment on how much the rates increase could be, and I would have dearly loved to see them encouraged at the same time and at the same place to be, if you want this lower than this would propose, for example, or higher, what would you include in, or what would you leave out? And in that regard, I would have liked to see current proposed spending, not just new spending, but spending that's been in a long-term plan before, but we haven't currently spent it yet. So proposed increases in service levels only include ones that are new, and to my way of thinking, they should include ones that we aren't currently doing but had planned to do next year, the year after. So if you put a list of all those in a mix and had what the project actually cost and gave the rate payers some alternatives to play around with some figures, and okay, if you want a 3% increase and that's less than a 3.8 or whatever, here's the list, what would you drop off? If you have, in the effect, ticked all those boxes and cricket lights in the morning and Mozgul pulls, this would be the rates increase or the ability to do that, and councillor McTavish noticed somebody else with the ability to...for people to play around with something...councillor McTavish is looking confused, but I...
Auckland.
Auckland had given people that ability, and you could do it just in a paper sort of sense, and I think that would have been really useful, because just asking them, I would guess they want us to keep the rates down, and on the other hand, to spend a whole lot of money that we couldn't do without putting the rates up. So I'd have just liked to see those all tied in together.
Given the context of putting this document together with the new financial requirements, it is a better document than I remember ever having when I first became a councillor, and I congratulate the staff to that extent. However, and it's a consistent theme that I've had during the debate in January, and I'm going to raise it now, is that we continue to be, and I understand why, the focus on debt, there is not much mention in here of assets. And this city is about a city, not just with one side of the balance sheet, it's about assets as well. And the reason I raise that is that we have opportunities for the city to grow and to change and be different with...if we also focus on assets. And maybe it's where we're at with our strategic framework, that we haven't got the parks and ricks, and we haven't got the environmental strategy at the moment, but I look at the work that, for example, Mountain Bike New Zealand, Otago have done in Dunedin, and how that's grown the city at very little cost to us, and we don't acknowledge that, and they're huge assets, in the same way that if we did focus occasionally on not just debt but assets and how we grew the city, how that picture may look quite differently on a graph, that we've got a much more livable city. We're not actually ticking off the boxes as the assets and what we need to make it a city that we can live in. And where we could get a pull, albeit, you know, even if it is 15 million, I'm not quite sure what the figures will be, but for 7.5 million, is that worth when you put debt sheet, if you're only looking at debt sheet? Yes. But if you're looking at an asset sheet, it's actually not. If all other things were equal, albeit appreciating the operating cost would be more expensive. And that's where I think we're missing an opportunity in this document, that we can't just always be focused on the debt, there are things that will grow the city, not maybe not at a cost to us personally. There've been wonderful groups in Dunedin, I can remember Joel Hamill coming along to one of my very first council meetings and talking about the roosting area at Anderson's Bay Inlet, done at not one price to the city, and yet we don't acknowledge those as assets. And I'm not quite sure how we can do it, but I wish this wasn't just about financial, it was about acknowledging, if we want to be building a great small city, we have to do it in partnership, and this document doesn't talk to that. And for that reason, I mean, I look forward to us changing that view when it comes to hearing all the plans that our community have through the consultation, and I'm hoping we can focus on how we can partnership better with the community to get the great city, the small city we want, not just be about us and our contribution.
Councillor P.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm planning to say something a wee bit similar to what councillor Wilson has articulated, and it has to do with kind of how we work our assets to better advantage. You know, I think Mia Cowell was saying last night to us at the anniversary dinner that Dunedin in 1913, 100 years ago, had the same population as we do today, more or less, 120, 125,000. And that kind of was a wake-up call for me to think that maybe we can, you know, we have progressed and our cup is more than half-full, and that we...I'm looking forward to the...and there's a very small paragraph in here about an assessment of non-strategic assets and how we might be able to utilise those too to good effect. As a newcomer to the LTP process in this council, I'm feeling as though we're asking ourselves and our citizens to take a big, deep breath as we ride out this debt spy, councillor Vandevos has pointed out, and servicing it and hopefully reducing it over time. So yeah, I'm thinking there is no great gold rush to help us out, as our forebears 150 years ago had, but there are way...there is gold out there, and we've got to just find new ways of doing business and helping business. I worry that perhaps we're not putting enough into that economic strategy as we could do, but that of course involves more money, but hopefully with our partners in that, that we can create the 10,000 jobs in 10 years that it aspires to. As you've said in your foreword to the consultation document, Your Worship, nothing is set in concrete, nothing, citizens ought to take that as an opportunity to give us some ideas back about how we should manage our finances over the next 10 years.
Councillor Thompson.
I just want to make a couple of comments. I want to endorse the comments that have been made by several people around the fact that we've got a financial strategy that says that we're going to restrict our rates to 3% and a set of financial accounts that says otherwise. And I think that...that you can question the wisdom of that, but I think that if we were to change that expectation to reflect what the forecast out here is currently telling us, you would be sending a signal to staff that that was just damn fine, splendid, carry right on, move along, nothing to see here. And I really don't think we can afford to do that. It concerns me that it will be very difficult indeed to meet that self-imposed target, and you can certainly argue that in terms of how people's incomes are changing, for most people, 3% is more than what their income is changing. So the need to achieve that is actually really high, and the risk of not achieving it is equally high. But I think to change the expectation would be a mistake, and so I think, yes, we need to acknowledge the reality of what those out-year forecasts are telling us, but I think that we also need to recognise that that's...they were telling us similarly large gaps over the last few years, and we've helped staff accountable for trying to do something about that, and I think we need to keep that message in place. The second comment I want to make is irrelevant. The suggestion has been made that we've got a debt graph that's coming down, but that in reality, the umbrella moves along in front of it. And I don't necessarily dispute the fact that the stuff that comes up that you didn't anticipate, that's the nature of life. But I do want to look at what we said was going to be the situation at the time that we did the last long-term plan, which was back in 2012, and what the situation actually is that we're projecting in this plan. Back in two...and I've just taken two years as examples, and I've backed the $30 million from the state of the stadium back out, just so we've got a comparison of apples with Because as councillor Carver says, we've shifted a walnut shell around, but if you want to compare apples with apples, back that back out. The forecast debt figure in the last long-term plan back in 2012 was that in 1617, we would have a debt of 253 million, and in fact, we're now forecasting 219 million. And in 2122, it forecast 197 million, and we're currently forecasting 177 million. So without wishing for a moment to suggest that you can put everything in stone and that nothing will change, the forecasts that have a bit...the situations that have eventuated compared to the forecasts three years ago are in fact significantly better than we were forecasting then. And there are whole-part factors for that, and some things...the reality, the concern around those levels drove decision-making that we didn't spend money that we were planning to spend. But my point...the point I simply want to make is let's keep some perspective around this and make sure that we are not necessarily attributing something that's not there. Those are the figures from three years ago, and I compare them with what we're actually finding now, and the difference is a factor of between 20 and 30 million dollars.
Through the discussion.
I'd like to make a few comments. This consultation document is the expression of the decisions that we made at the January meeting, the four-day meeting, and the decisions we made there were, to some extent, to a fairly large extent, a departure from what we perhaps had anticipated doing. So that provided staff in writing the consultation document with some pretty significant difficulties in the first place. But probably more important than that was that the implications of new requirements, new legislated requirements around consultation were pretty difficult to predict. And frankly, those requirements have been greater, for staff, I suggest, and for us, than we could have known and did know. And I think that probably every council around the country is...has faced this in the changeover of consultation style and type. So I believe that the timeframe in trying to achieve what we had to achieve has been too tight. It has been too demanding. I think staff have done a pretty remarkable job, but I'd have to acknowledge that I would have preferred...I would have liked the time for a further iteration of this consultation document had we been able to have it. But we didn't, and there were pressures both from the point of view of the new requirements, but also the fact that it was being audited, and there are certain constraints around that which are beyond our control too. So we were kind of caught between the pincers in getting this out. But as I say, I would have preferred another iteration, and I would have preferred another iteration because, as has been expressed in different ways around the table, our understanding of the development of...or the development of our understanding around cost drivers, et cetera, has become much more refined in the last few years. Councillor Wilson referred to consultation documents of a few years ago and our understanding of what was driving things, and it was nowhere near as sophisticated as it is now. We have a much better understanding of what the drivers are and where we are than certainly those of us who were here three, four years ago had. And that's to the credit of staff and to our chief executive and the previous chief executive in elucidating those things. So I would have liked to have had the opportunity to go on to another iteration where we would have talked about the need to acknowledge the cost drivers in the first place, and the fact that, as I expressed in my introduction, if the community wishes to have things over and above the standard service levels that a 3% per annum increase in rates will provide, then we have to acknowledge that it's going to cost more, and the community has to acknowledge it too. And I'm not sure that we managed that as well as we could. However, I am conscious that this is a consultation document, it is, as I said in my introduction, not set in stone, so I'm, I guess, reassured at least that if there are some inadequacies in it, it's not that they're going to be set forever. The community has the opportunity to comment on those, and we want them to, and what comes back in May to the hearings process will allow us to make decisions that can alter some of this, if that's the will of the community. So with that, I commend this consultation document to council. It isn't perfect, but under the circumstances, I think it's a pretty good effort and certainly fulfils requirements for consultation.
Who can move that? Councillor Moon, would you like to exaggerate a little?
Thank you, Your Worship. It's been an interesting debate, and I certainly acknowledge the views around the table from my council colleagues and yourself, Your Worship, all valid arguments, and I suppose rather than myself making any assumptions on those arguments, I would just like to encourage our constituents to involve themselves in the process, whether they have an interest in council assets in terms of revenue-generating assets and those sorts of things, whether that we can grow the pie, if they've got some innovative suggestions for us, whether they have concern about debt, like us all, we have a concern about debt, but whether they have advice for us, whether they have advice for us from service levels, which was raised by councils as well. So I just encourage the people who live in the city to involve themselves in this process so we have a better understanding and we have the ability, once we have a better understanding of what our community thinks, that we can make the right decision for the future.
Okay, now, I'm advised that the legal requirement is that I put each of these separately, so I'm going to put one, the recommendation, this is a piece of the recommendations on 4.2, which has been moved in a second. I'll put one, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, recorded, please.
Councillor Vandevos has voted against. Carried. Recommendation two, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Recommendation three, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, recorded, please.
Abstention, Your Worship.
Sorry?
Abstention.
And it's an abstention from councillor McTavish. And recommendation four, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Thank you all. That's the only item on the agenda. Thank you all for your input and attendance. That's the four meetings.